Okay, folks, we'll go ahead and get this meeting of the Bridgerton City Council together. Would you please all rise and join us in the pleasantries?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States. I am proud of my accomplishments, with the recognition of our power.
Thank you all very much. The clerk will now call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Westy.
Here.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Hines.
Here.
Councilmember Luther.
Here.
Councilmember Norris.
Here.
Councilmember Hood.
Here.
We have all eight councilmembers present. Where is it, everybody? We are down to item D, tonight's the agenda approval. Motion made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for approval of tonight's agenda. Are there further comments, questions, additions, detracts? Hearing and seeing none, those in favor of the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries your agenda's approval. We have public comments, I have an E tonight, we have one card, Mr. Mike Tinson.
He's on the phone.
Yes, uh, Mike Tinson, when we made the bill, we think our vote was, and, uh, it's about these large home shelters, uh, that he goes, uh, goes to stay into, uh, paying up for parks, and we wanted to, uh, build in, um, so they're going to be younger, they should have a part of the state, uh, I hope that I can come to, uh, and, uh, and, uh, maybe, uh, I, to talk about the service and, uh, I'll give you time, and, uh, the large home, uh, and, uh, play a part, maybe, maybe go to the gym, and, uh, that park, and, uh, what are we, uh, sort of, uh, fine, and, uh, maybe, that's what you may say. Thank you very much.
Any further comments or questions? All right, we are down to approval of the minutes, we have two sets of minutes, the regular city council meeting of July 5th, 2023, and then the mid-year budget meeting on July 11th, 2023 as well. Do we want to take these together? Is everybody okay with that?
No, we're together.
You want them together?
Together.
All right, so is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
No, we approve both seconds.
Motion's made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel to approve both sets of minutes, July 5th and July 11th, excuse me. Further comments or questions? Councilmember Grimmer, do you have anything else?
No, I think that they're well done, and I think the minutes, uh, actually be worthwhile, and if they should, what happens?
Very good. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the minutes as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries. We are down to appointments and presentations, and have before you tonight a listing of some individuals to serve on various boards and commissions for the city of Bridgerton. I'll read them all to you, and we can take them all up as one motion. So on the board of adjournments, Tracy Cook, who's also been served on the charter review and revision commission, serving on the pension commission or requested to, is Clark Grumpke, Ward 4, and Will Johansson Kiven, also of Ward 4, on planning and zoning, Emily Jacoby out of Ward 2, and then over on the last page there is Donna Mickens of Ward 4 on the finance commission.
Motion due approval.
Second, second.
Motion's made by councilmember Hood, seconded by councilmember Norris, for approval of the individuals to serve on Bridgerton boards and commissions. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries. Thank you all very much, these individuals, two of which are brand new, have never served on any of the boards and commissions at the city, and they'll do a fine job. We have no resolutions tonight, and no further public hearings, so we are down to permit, waivers, and appeals requests, item J, first is liquor license for Tria LLC, and it's councilmember Hines.
Yes, uh, motion for second reading for liquor license for Tria LLC doing business at Bridgerton Market Rock Road Liquor.
Motion made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for approval, and second approval of the liquor license for Tria LLC. Further comments or questions? Councilmember Hines?
Uh, this, uh, liquor license is a request for additional licenses, and, uh, we've gotten a police report, uh, which has done a background check by the State Missouri Highway Patrol, no wanted or warrants are out, uh, by the accident, so, uh, I recommend that we go ahead and pass this kind of license.
Very good, councilmember Grimmer?
Yes, I'm certainly in favor of the license, it's on an order, I did point out, or tried to point out at last meeting, the notary is incorrect, and it's an error on the notary's part, and, you know, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to expect that more license, uh, applications are proper and properly filled out, so, I'm not going to object, but, you know, we do look over these things, and, uh, having been a notary, uh, I've, you know, it's important, I think that they're always properly performing their duties, and, uh, this one didn't, so, just an observation, but I support the application if you're in the office, thank you.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Westy.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Luther.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved the liquor license, additional licenses for Tria LLC doing business at the Bridgerton Market. Second is a change of ownership at Old Pirate D and R, councilmember Hines.
Yes, uh, move for first reading for liquor license, change of ownership for Old Pirate D and R LLC, doing business as Pirate School.
Second. Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for a new liquor license due to a change of ownership at Old Pirate D and R LLC.
Like to make a motion to move this through?
Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Patel, table the liquor license consideration, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. That motion carries. We are down to emergency legislation, contracts, and bids, we have one bid approval to present to council tonight, councilmember Hines.
Yes, uh, motion for, uh, bid approval for the, uh, trailer-mounted light tower with generator.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for approval of the bid for the trailer-mounted light tower with the generator, councilmember Hines.
Uh, yes, uh, this is to replace, uh, an existing light tower that the city has, uh, I believe it's currently parked at or stored at the BMAC, and, uh, this is, uh, quite an upgrade, and I recommend, uh, quick approval of this new trailer-mounted light tower with generator.
Further comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the bid signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those approve, oppose, standing, motion carries, the bid approved for the mounted light tower. Perfection of bills, we are to bill 6382, councilmember Hines.
Motion for second reading of bill 6382.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for the second reading of bill 6382, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. That motion carries, councilmember Hines.
In ordinance of the city council, the city of Bridgerton, Missouri, read out these sections 105.500 through 105.540 of the city of Bridgerton Code of Ordinances relating to conflicts of interest and financial disclosures, like to make a motion that bill number 6382 become ordinance 23-27.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther, that bill 6382 become ordinance 23-27. Anything further, councilmember Hines? This is just the procedure that we always go through every year on, uh, disclosure reports.
Correct. It, uh, has to be updated every two years.
Right.
We're just updating this ordinance, thank you.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Luther.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing.
Aye.
Sorry.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved bill 6382 to become ordinance 23-27. We are to bill 6383 against councilmember Hines.
Motion for second reading of bill number 6383.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for the second reading of bill 6383, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries, councilmember Hines.
In ordinance of the city council, the city of Bridgerton, Missouri, application number 23-DC-06, establishing a special use permit for a banquet hall to allow a banquet and event center located at 12567 through 575 National Bridge Road. Like to make a motion that bill number 6383 become ordinance 23-28.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for bill 6383 to become ordinance 23-28. Councilmember Hines?
This is, um, an applicant, Joseph Hall, uh, with Omni Banquet, um, Events and Conference Center LLC, uh, petitioning to use part of the facility that used to be the Circuit City Building down here at National Bridge and St. Charles Rock Road, um, we do have an amendment to make to this bill.
Okay, would you like to make the amendment?
Okay.
Is there someone else? The chief of dock, Doc. He did ask for it.
Yeah.
He made the motion that it become an ordinance, and seconded by councilmember Luther. Uh? Okay.
He did give the ordinance number three.
Yes, he did. Okay, councilmember Hines?
I move to add the following language after number five on line 60 as number six, the operator, operator of the facility shall provide security for all banquet receptions and other similar events that occur on the premises, and this security shall have a current security license with St. Louis County.
Motion by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for the approval of proposed amendment regarding security at this proposed facility. Are there further comments or questions? Councilmember Grimmer?
I am, well, very, uh, very happy with that, that amendment, I think it's well crafted and to the point in light of what, as we discussed some of these events, what happens of afterwards, so I'm very comfortable with it, I think it's, uh, it should be half my support.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the proposed amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries, the amendment's approved, back to you, councilmember Hines.
Yes, motion, uh, to table bill number 6383.
Second. Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Patel for the tabling of bill 6383, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries, the bill is tabled, councilmember Hines.
This being a special use permit, I move that the proposed use set forth in bill number 6383 be determined to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the people of the city of Bridgerton in accordance with and in accomplishment of the comprehensive zoning plan of the city, taking into consideration the effect of such building or use of traffic conditions for our safety, the character of the neighborhood, the general wel- welfare of the community, and public utilities.
Very good.
This being a special use permit, I find this fact that the proposed use will have no adverse effect on the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the people of Bridgerton with respect to traffic conditions, for our safety, and character of the neighborhood, the general welfare of the community, or public utilities, my vote is aye.
Very good. Councilmember Luther? Concur and vote aye. Is that what you said?
Yes, I did, I did concur.
Are you voting for that? Councilmember Hines?
Have you concurred? Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Patel?
I concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Concur and vote aye.
All eight are in concurrence. Back to you, councilmember Hines.
I move to suspend the rules and remove the bill 6383 from the table.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther, to suspend council rules and remove bill 6383 from the table, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries, back to you, councilmember Hines.
I move that bill number 6383 become ordinance 23-28.
Correct. Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for bill 6383 to become ordinance 23-28. Further comments or questions? Do you have any, councilmember Hines?
I do not.
Anyone else? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Luther.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Westy.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved bill 6383 to become ordinance 23-28. We are down to bill 6384, again, councilmember Hines.
Motion for second reading of bill number 6384.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for the second reading of bill 6384, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries, councilmember Hines.
In ordinance of the city council, the city of Bridgerton, Missouri, application number 23 EZ-07, establishing a special use permit for a comprehensive marijuana dispensary facility located at 12430 St. Charles Rock Road.
Let him make them, watch your motion. Just make a motion, person.
Put it in order. Okay, move, move that, uh, bill number 6384 become ordinance 23-29.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther, that bill 6384 become ordinance 23-29, councilmember Hines.
Yes, uh, this, uh, again, this is...
Oh, you can leave it, I'm sorry, you're right.
Uh, this again is a special use permit, um, which allows the, uh, if it's passed, allows the business to operate, um, under certain conditions, um, and also, uh, under Missouri law, which was granted, uh, previously to, um, the, the city ordinance here with Bridgerton, so, uh, this should, uh, get them up and going, and, uh, we should be in compliance with all Missouri and Bridgerton city laws, uh, with this special use, uh, being passed, if we vote in favor of it, thank you.
Further comments or questions? Councilmember Hines?
All right, move that, uh, bill number 6384 move to the table.
Second. Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Patel for table bill 6384, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. That motion carries, councilmember Hines.
I move that the proposed use set forth in bill number 6384 be determined to promote the health, safety, and morals of the gen- and general welfare of the people of the city of Bridgerton in accordance with and in accomplishment of the comprehensive zoning plan of the city, taking into consideration the effect of such building or use on traffic conditions for our safety, the character of the neighborhood, the general welfare of the community, and public utilities. This being a special use permit, I find is a fact that the proposed use will have no adverse effect on the health, safety, morals, and general wel- welfare of the people of Bridgerton with respect to traffic conditions for our safety, the character of the neighborhood, the general wel- welfare of the community, or public utilities, and my vote is aye.
Very good. Councilmember Grimmer?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Patel?
I concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Westy?
I concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Concur and vote aye.
All eight have concurred, councilmember Hines?
Move to suspend the rules and remove bill number 20, uh, 6384 from the table.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther, to suspend council rules and remove bill 6384 from the table, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries, councilmember Hines.
Move that bill number 6384 become ordinance 23-29.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther, for bill 6384 to become ordinance 23-29. Further comments or questions, councilmember Hines?
I have none.
Any further comments or questions from council? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luther.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Westy.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hines.
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved bill 6384 to become ordinance 23-29. We've got one more, folks, and then we're done with all the special use permits. Bill 6385, councilmember Hines?
Me, yeah, okay. Motion for second reading of bill number 6385.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for the second reading of bill 6385, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. That motion carries, councilmember Hines.
In ordinance of the city council, the city of Bridgerton, Missouri, application number 23-DC-08, establishing a special use permit for a motorized off-road vehicle sales establishment located at 3417 North Lindberg Boulevard.
He didn't make a motion yet, yeah, wait.
Move that bill number 6385 become ordinance number 23-30.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for bill 6385 to become ordinance 23-30, councilmember Hines?
Uh, this bill, uh, came from, uh, planning and zoning with a favorable recommends- recommendation. Uh, we believe, um, that this will be a, a great use for this space, uh, down there on, uh, Lindberg used to be, uh, Value Trash Store, and, uh, it's been vacant for a couple of years now, but, um, the, the business, the, uh, petitioner, uh, has, uh, an existing location, uh, and this will be an additional location for them, so, uh, I think we welcome them in this spot and, uh, look, look forward to, uh, passing this special use permit, thank you.
The motion tabled.
Motion to, uh, there's no other discussion, I guess most of the day...
Counsel, wait a minute, there is one. Councilmember Grimmer?
I concur with, uh, councilman Hines, I think the, uh, kind of somewhat isolated location is a, a great, uh, great spot for these folks, uh, they're expanding a, an additional successful business, and I think it's a great fit, and I look forward to a very healthy business moving into our city, so, I fully support this, thank you.
Very good. Seeing no further ones, councilmember Hines?
Motion to table bill number 6385.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther to table bill 6385, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries, councilmember Hines?
Motion that the proposed use set forth in bill number 6385 be determined to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the people of the city of Bridgerton in accordance with and in accomplishment of the comprehensive zoning plan of the city, taking into consideration the effect of such building or use on traffic conditions, for our safety, character of the neighborhood, and the general welfare of the community and public utilities. I find is a fact that the proposed use will have no adverse effect on the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the people of Bridgerton with respect to traffic conditions, for our safety, the character of the neighborhood, the general welfare of the community, or public utilities, my vote is aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Patel?
I concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Concur and vote aye.
All eight councilmembers are in concurrence, councilmember Hines?
Move to suspend the rules and remove bill 6385 from the table.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther, to suspend council rules and remove bill 6385 from the table, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. That motion carries, councilmember Hines?
Motion, um, that bill number 6385 become ordinance 23-30.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther, for bill 6385 to become ordinance 23-30, further comments or questions, councilmember Hines?
I have none, mayor.
Very good. Further comments or questions from council? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved bill 6385 to become ordinance 23-30. Bill 6386, again, if you, councilmember Hines?
Move for second reading of bill number 6386.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for the second reading of bill 6386, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries, councilmember Hines?
In ordinance of the city council, the city of Bridgerton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here to with Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated, move that bill number 6386 become ordinance number 23-31.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for bill 6386 to become ordinance 23-31. Councilmember Hines?
Yes, uh, this bill, uh, and if it becomes ordinance, uh, gives, uh, authority to the mayor and the, uh, city clerk, um, to, um, have Stock and Association, uh, Associates Consulting Engineers do a, uh, a study on Ferguson Lane out there, possibly doing some re- location of the, of the, uh, of the street, uh, elevation or lowering it, uh, to see if we can, uh, avoid some long-term flooding problems if and hap- happening out there, and help the rest of the, uh, the properties that, that are butt up to Ferguson Lane, that's what this ordinance is about, so I'm in favor of it.
Further comments or questions from council? Seeing and hearing, hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved bill 6386 to become ordinance 23-31. We are down to item M tonight, considerations, new bill, bill 6387, and once again, to councilmember Hines?
Motion for s- first reading of bill number 8387.
63.
Moving 6387.
Second. Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Patel for the first reading of bill sixty-three eighty-seven. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Standing. Motion carries. Councilmember Hines.
In ordinance of the city council, the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here to with Haber Burger Incorporated for the replacement of three train compressors at the government center in an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Five hundred.
Thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second. There wasn't any motion yet.
Oh, just correct it.
Huh?
Just correct any amount.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
No. This was for first reading.
First reading.
What I would like to do is, uh, ask for suspension of council rules and have a second reading on this. Our public works.
I'll second that, too. Councilmember Hines has moved for suspension of council rules to give consideration to bill sixty-three eighty-seven for second, third reading, seconded by councilmember Patel. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Standing. Motion carries. Councilmember Hines. Come on, second reading.
Second reading, in ordinance of the city council, the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement substantially in the form attached here to with Haber Burger Incorporated for the replacement of three train compressors at the government center, that's up here on top of the roof, in an amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. I'd like to, uh, ask that, uh, bill number sixty-three eighty-seven become ordinance twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Wait, man, I took the left to vote on the second reading, though.
Well, he didn't make the motion for the second. He made the motion to suspend the rule, so he didn't make the motion.
Yeah, we need a motion for second reading of the bill.
Okay, uh, motion for second reading of bill number sixty-three eighty-seven.
Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for the second reading of bill sixty-three eighty-seven. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries. Now you can do your own for the ordinance.
Okay, motion to, uh, uh, make bill number sixty-three eighty-seven ordinance twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Second. Motion's made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luther for the bill sixty-three eighty-seven to become ordinance twenty-three dash thirty-two. Further comments or questions? Councilmember Hines.
I have none.
Any others from council? Councilmember Patel.
Yeah, I think we need to move forward on this quickly 'cause it's middle of summer. There's no use waiting all the way to September, so, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Seeing hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Westy.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Luther.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you approve bill sixty-three eighty-seven to become ordinance twenty-three dash thirty-two. We're down to discussion items, which we have none. Can I use the court?
I have nothing, mayor, thank you.
Very good. Council of Communications, we'll start. Councilmember Grimmer.
Yes, uh, thank you, mayor. Last night, uh, uh, the mayor and I and councilman Hines attended the, uh, an EPA meeting. Uh, I'd just like to kind of report on, on what I took back from that meeting. Uh, basically, uh, most of the meeting was taken by, uh, run by John Chapman and Karen Nichols of the, uh, Just Moms who, of course, has, has spearheaded a lot of the, uh, activity going back from when the, uh, Westlake issue was first raised. Uh, kind of happy to report that, uh, in Ms. Chapman's opinion, that the Westlake, uh, project was well on its way to completion. Uh, in fact, I had a, a little conversation after the meeting with, uh, uh, one of the EPA officials and basically, uh, the, the report I got was that the construction, the actual construction, the actual digging, uh, into the site, the excavation plan, if you will, uh, by December of this year will be ninety percent complete. So, that's very encouraging out. Of course, that probably means there's another, at least a half year of planning and revision and so forth to get the extra ten percent. But basically, what I've heard there is, and they tossed around this, this five years thing, and I think that that's a goal or completion from when this project will be completed. But the message here is that Westlake is well on its way, uh, to being completed, uh, and, and I think that that's very comforting. Further along the line, of course, the latest issue is Coldwater Creek and, and folks, that is just, uh, I don't know how else to put it, but that is just an ungodly mess. Uh, the, the one thing about our pollution here in Westlake, as you know, is that it was somewhat contained. We kind of knew where it was. That's not to say that it's, it's, it's totally, uh, all of it is totally, but the great majority, but we kind of know where it was. A solution instrument developed, but Coldwater Creek, the contamination there because of the almost, uh, annual flooding there, there's just so much contamination along fourteen miles of that creek that, uh, that is just going to be just an ungodly situation. So, uh, hopefully, uh, if that unfolds, I think it's, it's, you're going to see a, a lot of, uh, a lot of effort put into that in years and years and years of cleanup. And then, of course, the next issue is that, uh, in St. Charles County, um, they kind of heard that there were some issues out there at the Wells and Springs, although, as many of you know, uh, they have a containment facility out there that supposedly all of the contaminated materials from the, uh, emissions and radioactive, uh, materials plants that they had in St. Charles County are contained within that containment facility out there, which is a big, kind of a rock mountain. I don't want to call them an atomic mountain. It's kind of making fun of it, but a lot of folks have called it that. Um, the issue there seems to be groundwater and apparently, uh, the groundwater maybe not enough attention was paid to that and as a result, there seems to be some, some real issues with groundwater out there. Uh, as an example of, or kind of heading toward that, the next meeting from the EPA is, is scheduled for the community center, August second in New Mally. And I think that, uh, they're going to talk to the St. Charles residents to kind of bring them up to date on what they have found. And of course, the other issue back in the background, running along the whole, uh, kind of the, the elephant in the room on this thing was the fact that over the last month or so, uh, a lot of documents were released that go back to, all the way back to the parties, the late parties, that kind of indicated that the government was somewhat aware that we had issues, that this radioactivity, uh, was dangerous and harmful. They knew it, uh, and yet they chose not to disclose it. They kind of tried to put the lid on this thing and, you know, it's coming out now, eighty years, seventy, eighty years later, uh, doesn't help the folks that suffered and, not only suffered, but a lot of folks probably directly died from their exposure to this. So, uh, we can't go back and fix that, but it's, it's just one of the things that we should be aware of. Um, I think a lot of this trust, I guess, to the government agencies and things like this, it was, it was, uh, not something to be proud of, of, of our government, I think, the way they handled this. So, uh, a lot of things going on back there, but I guess the, if there is one that you could call a bright spot, um, Westlake itself is well on its way to a, uh, an acceptable cleanup, uh, as you will. That's not to say that all the issues are solved, but at least the main one, uh, by years and years of, of agitating and, and advocating for a solution, uh, I think we're well on, on our way of, of getting a, a solution there, so. And then finally, I'd like to say, I, I'm very comfortable with the, uh, the pre-budget meetings that the mayor has instituted several years ago. Uh, what we do, we have a budget, we have to pass it by December, basically, for the following year. Uh, we start in, in June and July to start the initial review and that gives us a, a lot of time to kind of consider and, and polish off things and if we've got something that needs a little bit of, uh, uh, revision and so forth, we have time to do that and be comfortable with it rather than try to cram everything into the last, maybe November and December. So, I just want to compliment the administration and particularly, uh, the mayor for driving these, uh, budget meetings, uh, the mid-year budget meetings as well. And I think it's a very healthy and very, uh, productive process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, mayor, I have nothing.
Councilmember Patel.
Not any other time, thank you.
Councilmember Westy.
Thank you, mayor, I have nothing.
Councilmember Hood.
Hey, I had the privilege of, uh, filling in for Jerry at, as I review last night and I'm pleased to announce that everything that was on the agenda was passed unanimously as far as signing, for Coke Air, Play Smart Staffing, Spirit Halloween, All-Star Chief, and Burman Jones, so, very proud to be.
Good. Anything else?
No, sir.
Councilmember Norris.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I only get five. It's five long lists. Um, I'm sorry. Um, I was on vacation in Wisconsin while you guys were all sweating and raining, so it was beautiful up in upstate Wisconsin, so, but when I came back, I was getting calls. Um, I'm glad that the storm of this last weekend did not cause the damage that, uh, the one two weeks ago caused. Um, there was some damage on Smiley, that's in North Fork. Uh, one of the houses, uh, oak was split and pulled down the wires. Um, five houses were affected, but, uh, the, the person, uh, the resident, uh, was very appreciative of, of calling dispatch immediately. They were contacted, the, uh, police and, um, the, uh, fire department were there within minutes, no delays, um, and, uh, they were able to block the street so Amrin could get in there and get that tree off the wire so they could get the... So, you know, I know it was very fast for Amrin, but they only had a few houses to do and I think these people are, you know, stay around for a while. It looks like we might have some future, um, you know, it, it looks like some future storms, so they might be taking some long-term, uh, job situations here. Um, I do need to ask, uh, did we ever decide on the condition dinner date set? I, I kept seeing things back and forth, so if we could answer that. And also, I do want to thank the mayor and the staff to arrange the midterm, midterm budget meeting. It is very, uh, it was very informative. I just want to say Bridgeton is doing very well. Um, so, oh, and I do have a question. Um, mayor or anybody, um, does liquor licenses come up like tonight? Does liquor license, do, do they prograde? Do they come up at one time or liquor licenses just come up whenever they're due? And business licenses, do they all come up in January? Um, in the calendar?
Liquor licenses are at the end of June.
End of June, all of liquor licenses come due?
Business licenses are beginning of the year.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I was just wondering if they all come in, you know, 'cause business is always coming in at the same time, do they come in? So, it's all at one time. All right. Um, I'm done, uh, got some other things, but I'll wait. I'm kind of done. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Luther.
Second. Concur and vote aye. There you go. I want to thank everybody who's here and thank for everybody who's here, on board and conditions and comes up to the meeting. Thank you. I did want to follow up. Thank you very much for, uh, several councilmembers, Grimmer and also the mayor for attending the meeting last night. Uh, that was a really good report. I wanted to let you know that I saw there's an article about a week ago, front page of the Dispatch, Senator Josh Hawley, because of some of the reasons that you brought up to stand behind this effort. So, tremendous work and effort and congratulations for the work of Judge Moms SCL and the special counsel. Just wanted to mention that. I also want to thank, uh, council, fellow councilmember Bob Patel. Bob will be covering for me for the ordinance adjustment meeting next week. I will be out of town. Want to mention in the meeting, very exciting next week, very exciting meeting, because Ward Three will have a meeting at seven o'clock, so we're pretty excited about it. So, thank you. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you. Councilmember Hines.
Thank you, mayor. Um, nice seeing the officer here. Thank you for being with us. Um, the, uh, applicants for Pirate's Cove are in the audience, Roger and Theresa Weatherford. If you have any questions to them after the meeting, I'm sure they'd be happy to talk to you and, uh, let you know what their plans are for, uh, for new ownership down there of, uh, why you all are numbered at Pirate's Cove. Uh, nice seeing the, um, audience here and, uh, congratulations on Omni Banquet Center. Uh, we wish you a lot of success and hope you bring us a lot of money through sales tax. But, uh, and, uh, yeah, I too attended that meeting last night, as Mr. Grimmer said, and, uh, very informative and, uh, that's always been the case with, uh, with Dawn and Karen. They're, they're just, they do so much, uh, groundwork, investigation, reading documents and, uh, they're very knowledgeable, uh, more than anybody else I know about what's going on up there and, uh, the past history of the Manhattan Project. But, uh, I wish them a lot of success. And by the way, they do take donations. They're not-for-profit organization. I told them last night that maybe they should have envelopes at their future meetings just to remind people, um, because, uh, you know, that, that they're hot, they're, they're moms. They stay at home and, uh, and they're doing this, uh, you know, out of the goodness of their heart and, uh, to help our organization, I think would be a, uh, would be something nice that we could do or members of the community could do. That's, uh, that's all I have. Thank you, mayor.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to staff reports. We'll start with Parks and Recreation. Mr. King.
The first of the parks, uh, community capital out of the project is Ridgeway Park. We'll be, uh, underway later this week. I'll need you to help people walk towards there, uh, if Ridgway has to be had, of course. Uh, we're going to remove these, this fencing, uh, around the corner, which should be done in a couple of weeks. Uh, also, the, uh, B-Mind Backstop, uh, project is to be done, uh, this week. Um, the old backstop they didn't do and then now incoming, we'll start to build it again. So, it's definitely possible.
Great. Questions, comments? Mr. Gunn.
Our concrete project, we're about ninety percent done. Hopefully this time next week will be a hundred percent while it operates. We had two big ports in Hackout on Taylor and one small port in Elvia. On Friday, we opened up this for modifications, the city of all times, we're going to add this two-sided LED board that was on Friday, so we'll be going to council, uh, the first reading and the next meeting. And then your question, that's all I have.
Councilmember Hines has a question.